Yeah, I'd like to welcome everyone to this joint city council planning commission meeting and I will call.
Council member Uwi.
Present.
Council member Halleck.
Present.
Council member Shunley.
Here.
Council member Reg Stupromin.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Friker.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Chairman Hayward.
Here.
Celine, Planning Commissioner Pinyal, Pinyal, sorry, is online and Planning Commissioner Jack Shaw is on his way.
Okay, thank you Karen. And with that, I will turn it over to a person that really needs no introduction, Denise Gorger.
Thank you. I'll share my screen. There we go. Okay. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak again on the housing element for a presentation for the fifth cycle primarily, but fifty-six cycling updates. And let me know if you can't hear me now. My name is Denise Duffy. I'm a housing element consultant. I consult for the city. And we're going to talk tonight about what our next steps are. It's supposed to be really meant as an overview for what's coming up. So that we could be prepared for our next month of meetings related to rezoning, housing element update, presentations and action for fifth cycle and then I'll give an overview on sixth cycle as well. So I'll give you a quick update, not knowing who is in the audience about, a little bit about the background and process. Remind us of our sites inventory and then talk about really the needed actions for the fifth cycle for the RENA, to meet our RENA, regional housing needs allocation, as well as what's our upcoming update, adoption for the element as well as the Arizona amendment. And then hopefully we can have some public comments and commissioner and council discussion. And feel free to interrupt me or just let me go through and it's your choice. So we are, we're still within our, we're doing a housing elements required element of the general plan. It must be updated every eight years because the city hasn't updated the housing element in so many years. We're in a four year cycle. Really what we're trying to do is finalize and complete the fifth cycle and get it into the sixth cycle and we're moving along on both. Reminder, our fifth cycle RENA is a total of eighty-six affordable housing units. RENA again is the regional housing needs allocation, of which seventy of those are low and very low. And that shortfall is actually very important to understand because the shortfall means that this is something that you actually have to achieve with your rezoning. And then there are six cycle that's coming up is two hundred and seventy total. We need to have an adequate zoning to meet the needs of our RENA. The housing element has adequate, has to have adequate housing goals and policies. And a housing element doesn't mean you have to build the housing units or provide funding for them. Our fifth cycle is eighty-six units. And currently unfortunately, as for the last, you know, twenty years, there hasn't been any available residentially zone vacant sites to meet the housing needs where because of the city's being built out, not enough sites within the area to actually meet the housing need under the RENA allocation. So we know that we need to rezone the sites. We went through what's called the sites inventory process from fifth cycle, both the twenty nineteen and we revisited that twenty twenty-three. And we've identified the sites that are adequate to be able to provide the housing. And we've also been communicating a lot with HCD and essentially HCD as a state housing community development directed the city to rezone sites, certain sites, one and one A, in order to meet the housing needs for fifth cycle. Let's council looked at these sites, probably admit, I don't want to say a million times, but quite a few times to reaffirm and make sure that this is really what the city wanted to do. And during that period of time, we had a larger area than various other sites. But consistent with HCD's direction, the city for the fifth cycle determined that sites one and one A are where the focus would be and that's some of the former four ward. This is a map that shows those sites. It, the area that's the hatchmark is sites one and one A in the former four ward. This is the entirety of the area of the former four ward. Sites one and one A are owned by the city and this map is meant to be just related to that housing element overlays on the hatchmark area. Wanted to show you that. I think we, I said that. Yeah, so. Okay, so our, right now, we're in this portion of compliance. HCD has certain requirements. So in their letter that they identified what needs to be done, they identified really that we have to meet certain government codes. And once you have an unmet need with, the city must identify and rezone the sites within the first year of a new planning period in order to be compliant, since that didn't happen back in twenty, in the early two thousands and twenty nineteen, the city cannot find, the HCD is going to find that element in non-compliance until we actually complete the rezoning. Now the city's at that spot, the rezoning is, it's time to do it. We've completed the required housing element updates and ready to meet the letter of the law from HCD. So today, talking about really what our actions are. The reason I want to say this is because this is what's coming before you as both the planning commission as a recommending body to the city council and then to the city council. So planning commission really reviewing the housing element update and the general plan amendment, the actions are approving the housing element update for the fifth cycle, which you've seen before and approved before. There's a general plan amendment because that's anytime you amend an element of your general plan, a housing element is an element. That would be called a general plan amendment. There's some land use amendment text and approval of a zoning amendment, implementation, code to implement your general plan. And then there'll be revisions to maps and texts. So the approach that we're using is adding an overlay district for affordable housing. That would both amend the land use map for the general plan as well as the zoning ordinance. We'll just talk briefly about each of those actions. Again, to just prepare for our next set of meetings and, and when actually work will actually be done and actions will be taken. This is a workshop, so we're here for just questions and discussion. So the action of the general plan amendment, the housing element is one of the elements of the city general plan. So the city will be adopting the housing element update for the fifth cycle. HCD has reviewed that element, has said, this is great, don't make any changes. Please adopt as is, keeps their job easier. So that's, that's a general plan amendment. That's one action. There's going to be revisions to the land use designation of the general plan under the land use element. That's another action. You will part of that, which you're going to be adding an overlay district for affordable housing. And so you'll also be amending the map. So those are the three things that we've been coming back with you and discussing with you and they're very simple in that light. And then, there'll also be some language that we'll be talking about in terms of the general plan amendment under the land use element. So I just supplied that here. So we're going to, you know, basically have a policy that we already have in the housing element that we need adequate land zone to accommodate future housing need. And we also would have to require, have to be at the density that HCD requires. And that is a minimum of twenty units per acre. They don't have a maximum, so that would be a discussion for tonight. They, you can go higher than twenty-five minutes per acre. You may want to go less than that. They recommended, HCD staff recommended, keep it to at least twenty-five each. But it's specificity. I wanted to just identify that we're not looking at a site that hasn't been already considered, been considered for development in the former four door. The former four door, when for, for a reuse plan and the city general plan got adopted, was adopted in the late nineties. Identified this site for a conference center, office park, hotels, golf, a lot of commercial and retail. So really you have over five hundred thousand square foot of development under your general plan and the area plans that is proposed and approved under, allowed under the planning documents at this point. The, the general plan that was updated was updated citywide. This says total residential slash hotel units. It's taken directly out of the general plan. But with that, at that time, those were all supposed to be hotel units on former quarter. The rest of the residential units was considered to be in the city proper. But I think this just, you know, this is really taking it from the EIR as well, that this gives you an idea that about a development that's been out there that's been considered and considered in previous environmental documents. When residential, if it were to come through and there's available, there's a participant that would like to develop a housing, affordable housing. We'd be looking at a balance to make sure that there's no more greater development than it was previously allowed in the general plan EIR. Unless you go through the process of an amendment. So the approach that we're using for the zoning, I wanted to just identify is an overlay zone and an overlay zone is applied as basically additional overlay of what is on your current existing general plan. So your densities and your, your, your uses underneath would be, you have the commercial, the visitor servants are allowed within the land use plan and the zoning. So basically a purpose of an overlay zone is you're overlaying onto the existing allocation, excuse me, designation. And ordered in this case to allow residential simply isn't allowed now and to be able to increase the affordable housing. So that's the approach that we're using. There's a couple of key parameters under the overlay zoning that we're adding to the ordinance. The density is one. I mentioned that before, a minimum of twenty dwelling units per acre, which is the HCD basis that on base type of city that it is. In this case, we're assuming that's up to thirty-five feet. HCD also doesn't want you to go too much lower than that. And we're, we're assuming a height similar to, in terms of the design standards, the cities are two, which is about two and a half or three stories. Allowable over there. One key parameter for, for, for a shortfall, which is, this is what the city's doing. They're accommodating the shortfall in terms of their portable housing zoning. That the design review is allowed. So it's not a, if even you can, you can provide, provide particular design review onto the project if, when, if and when this comes through. So it's not necessarily, even though you're allowing this eighty-six units, that affordable residential, you still have the opportunity to do design review.
Um, back on that slide. I knew in your previous housing update, you'd mentioned objective design standards. Where does that, how does, how does that happen in a design review?
You, your design review cannot, under, there's two things. We have a program in our housing element sixth cycle for an objective design standard to develop objective design standards. So that is, I think, what you're referring to.
Right.
But also in this, under the requirements, you can't have subjective design standards or when someone comes in for affordable housing for under this particular for these sites. It's, I don't know the words for it at this point, but you're, you're, you're supposed to have objective design standards, things that would be normally required and not outside the box of, you know, denying it because you don't like the design and that's what, you know, that's what the dial findings are.
So when you say design review, are you, you're not talking about standards that have already been established? This is.
Well, right now, the zoning ordinance will be asking to put in some design standards within that. Yeah, you, there's been discussion before about I want to have a certain amount of open space. I think that was mentioned in one of our first meetings. Someone said, we want to make sure that there's some open space that can be put in.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so there's, but the level of specificity needs to be there, so it's not just too broad.
Got it.
And that's, that's what I think the design review, design standards is.
Okay, and then what about, does this parking a part of this?
You could put parking standards in there as well. You have design and development standards in each of your zoning districts already and we'll go over what you have that's there. And so you could put those, you know, the same characteristics or, at the end there, we want to make sure that it's not precluding anything that's being done is precluding affordable housing because they actually look like that, but. So again, the zoning amendment, putting in a horrible housing overlay, which would be adding the zoning overlay district to this zoning map. Again, this is the area right here. It's actually, that's the entirety of the site. So it would be the area that's currently owned by the city. I think that's a good distinction to make. That the, the sites one and one A are specific to the city owned sites. So we would be amending the zoning map as well. And you would be amending the municipal code to add the zoning overlay district, just like we did with the ADU. There was an addition to the zoning ordinance. And the purpose would be to facilitate the development of affordable housing only on the city owned sites, sites, excuse me. And you would keep the current base zoning for these sites, so they could develop in either types. Or the existing base zoning. And the base zoning now is about general commercial over visitor overlay. And we want to stress that this is an overlay zone specifically to meet RENA. Fifth cycle. So the actions adopted, a housing element, revisions of land use designations and adding the overlay district, was the same actions, just parallel. And, you know, we've written a draft of the zoning overlay district that needs to be reviewed by city attorney. And the purpose and intent is that to, to implement the required rezone programs per certain state law and our housing element. So you'll have a, just like any other zoning ordinance, you'll look at it. It's not exciting and all, but all the required elements. Right now, I just wanted to briefly identify that you've got current uses. There's an interesting thing about the city because under the C one district, it says you can have R one uses there, but I think, you know, there's just some fuzzy room there. So I think what we, we just wanted to identify that there's a number of different uses already allowed. And conditional uses and your standards aren't that different in terms of, you know, what's allowed in terms of height. And currently no uses allowed, no residential use is allowed at the density that being considered as needed. There's the, there's different uses allowed, conditional use permit. There's also neighborhood commercial and office professionals are allowed in the area of site one. So here's an example of some development standards in the residential drawings you have now. I'm sure you're familiar with this because it's been in the housing element. But it identifies, here's the different types of regulations, yard requirements, front and side yard, rear yard, building heights, number of stories. Do you have a garage or not? And, and those are things that you could add to the zone, overlay if it was necessary. Here's the design. You have an overlay district already. That's why I wanted to show you this slide. It's the, called the D district and it basically has certain requirements already. So it's not new and overlay district isn't new to the city. It has minimum lot size. In HCD, in terms of minimum lot size requirements, they don't want to see anything smaller than one acre. Suggesting two, so that there's enough room. You'd have to have a minimum of sixteen units of affordable housing under the HCD requirements. So those, that's, that's going to be in the zoning ordinance and and I already mentioned the densities. Yes, the point would be to allow residential use exclusively for affordable housing. The draft ordinance identifies the the purpose of the housing, of the affordable housing overlay zone. Also provides definition of what affordable housing is, what the district is, definitions of very low, low and moderate levels defined. It also has the identification of the specific area for which the overlay zone would be, only for the areas within sites one and one A to meet for fifth cycle. And it talks about the income restriction and usually there's also a requirement for some development incentives under, under this. And so there's an item in there to think about if there's any relaxed development standards for development under affordable housing. And so we put that as one of the development incentives. There's a density averaging assumption definition setbacks could be determined. I think really looking for any input on that. Some other different jurisdictions will use, you know, some architectural things that they want to put in such as, you know, no more than forty feet of frontage to the building without having some, a difficult setback or, or different architectural or window penetration, things like that. So that's really the the gist of my overview. This is just a, here's what this lovely thing is going to look. For the fifth cycle for their approval. And although they have more time, they, they promised to look at it quickly as they've done in the past. So we can certify, get a hopefully certification by May, December for fifth cycle. That's it.
Okay, thank you Denise. What I'll do is I'll start with the planning commissioner first. If you all have any comments or questions, just go through your raise your hand and Denise, you can call on whatever commissioner would like.
The lovely question that came up for me is, how will this change affect, how will developer look at our property for development?
Question. I think the, I think it's actually a great question for the city management, because it's not necessarily a question about the housing element process. Did you get that? How would, the question was raised, how would this amendment, how these amendments affect how a developer may look at that property? And I can answer the logistics aspect, but maybe you can answer that. General question.
Yeah, well, correct me if I'm wrong, because the reason we're doing the overlay is because we don't really know. Because we haven't talked to the developer yet. Don't know what your development will potentially look like out there. And so by doing the overlay, we're building in flexibility to put housing where it makes sense and leaving the option building for commercial numbers of there instead of housing that makes sense. So if anything, this gets added flexibility for the developers to work with, well, and housing providers and be creative on where they want us to be projecting on the part of that. Right Denise?
Yes, thank you. Fast and answer.
Maybe someone, maybe someone in the council thinks it was, I, twenty-five minutes per acre, what's that look like? I don't know, kind of homes, tiny homes, sort of, I'm not sure, my mind's out there. Map that out.
Yeah, so it depends on whether it's a, you know, a built up property clustered, it's, it could, you have an R two area zone. I think the maximum zoning for your, the area that you have for your condos in the city, I think it's eighteen to twenty units per acre right now. And that's.
So also it's, oh, right now, eighteen, twenty.
Yes, but you also could cluster it and there's also different, yeah, different ways to do it. So I think there's some, and they have some different versions of density that I will be bringing in for the next meeting or else I'll just post it on the website and let you know, because I think that gives you some, there's so much variety.
Yeah.
And relation of how it can look. How does it stepped up onto a hillside? Is it clustered? Are they small units? You know, your housing element, your programs identify the possibility of having tiny homes. So there's a lot of different variations that can be done. And one of the items that, you know, we have in the design review to be a part of, or design standards, etc., to be a part of that. Any proposal that comes forward allows you to take a look at that too. And in the ordinance right now, I have written that we, we're hoping that they would come in for a free application meeting as opposed to somebody just coming in so that the city could actually look in, at this, at the designs and still be, you know, be fair in terms of approvals.
Yeah, I saw something, we were, the planning things back a couple of years back, there were some that were really interesting. I want like, what kind of lot, or one house, they put like eighty tiny homes, kind of, and shared a lot of them up. Lot and there was another one with like a little, like a city block they built up, they put, they put full time, I think it's something like eighty units in this one little thing and then. So it's an interesting idea. Yeah, okay. The, you, towards the end, you were talking about allowable, or allowable residential for RENA exclusively. That was like just in part of one and one A. Right? Then I didn't quite understand. You were talking about something about using it exclusively for RENA. But is that just like you're going to get a key part of one and one A?
So as, as was mentioned earlier, so the, this is a zoning overlay.
Right.
Zone. So it can be applied anywhere within sites one and one A to allow for the affordable housing. And then this allows the future flexibility.
That's good.
For citing.
And did we have funny name up, are you working down here or running the airport? I don't know if we were looking to what the, the terracing was for, where you build under the airport. Did we ever give any definitive one?
I, I think what you're talking about is there's airport safety zone.
Right. There was that and then it was like, maybe could be added by taking stores that aren't where you stop the food.
Yeah, I, I, you're, so in terms of the area over there in your commercial area, you have a small portion of that that's not within a safety zone.
It's outside of that.
Yeah, so they, what they call the airport influence area, airport influence area allows residential.
Okay.
When you go into the safety zone, the next one down, where you have a lot of the property in there, it's residential density under the airport land use permission is two units per acre.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I don't want to get into the safety area. So we did determine there is a little bit potentially outside of your.
Absolutely. And if you'll read the sixth cycle, housing element and the EIR, they discuss that and gives you parameters and that's one of the areas that's being considered for sixth cycle.
Okay, good. So I don't really know about that. Great, okay. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the planning commissioners? Yeah, we'll open it up to council members, same, same process. If you have questions, cities, feel free to call on whoever.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you again. Denise Duffy and associates, pretty very comprehensive, thorough presentation. The city moves forward effectively, do your efforts and thank you very much from our development, council, management division and community. I'm very excited about the reviewing, discussions on the rezoning in our next upcoming meetings. We're going to have the opportunity to implement some very creative ideas architecturally and. Uh, architecturally and, uh. By way of traffic circulation, walkability, aesthetically, uh, within our neighborhoods that will really contribute to the quality of life and overall health of, uh. In the community developed. One question that was brought up, uh, is parking, so we'll have a say in how that is established and oriented. I'm also wondering, uh, will we be able to suggest ideas for landscaping, for a station, a certain percentage of. Uh, certain areas, so on and so forth, and, um. You know, one example that comes to mind, something is about a planning vision meeting, or a similar, hopefully, rather. Years ago, uh, where we'll have the ability to add a minimum, or the, is it a minimum of thirty-five foot height?
No, it's a maximum.
Maximum of thirty-five foot height, there's some really creative ways that we can do that, such as, um. Lesser floor area per story oriented to one side or another, in conjunction with path of the sun. To allow some sun exposure and, um, just, it just opens the door on a lot of ways that we need to be very creative in, uh. In crafting our new zoning ordinance. Just gonna add these, uh, similar to Commissioner Krieger's in ways. Is, uh, concerning the zoning overlay, priority, could you please clarify, priority should be and will be given to low income housing. It should also mention, uh, that we will maintain a, uh. What was the language? The base zoning requirements and whatnot to allow for. Commercial office visitor, and so on and so forth, and so what I'm wondering is, when the time comes for development. Will, as it should, um, the low income housing aspect of any developments. Take precedence and need be developed first? Can it be done in unison as, uh, parts of that community come together, or how would that work?
Okay, thank you, um, in terms of landscaping, yes, you could put design standards for landscaping in the draft ordinance, so I want to be clear of that. Um, the zoning overlay is, uh, developer or applicant may come in with, um. With an overlay, with a housing, affordable housing plan, they can do it in such a way that they would have priority. Um, for the, for the, for that particular area, um, because, um, you want to meet your housing Rena. Also, um, a developer could come in and, uh, and there is a requirement if they come in. Um, just for residential, a certain percentage of residential, um, if they come in for mixed use, has to be fifty-one percent. Of the, of the area must be, uh, residential, affordable. Um, so we would, you know, everything is going to be dependent upon what comes in. Um, and then review that, but there is that requirement, there's also, um.
Okay.
No, no, go ahead, John. Uh, okay, uh, I'll go first, uh, thank you Denise, uh, I just have a question regarding the role of the H C D. So, uh, of course, we're gonna be submitting our housing element, uh, by October twenty-sixth. And then, uh, can they, what can they do, uh, with our submission? Uh, can they still revamp it, or, and if there are some recommendations, are we required to adopt them?
So for the, you ready?
Yeah.
Thanks, um, so for, this is the fifth cycle housing element, so for the fifth cycle house, cycle housing element, they've already written a letter and they've determined that it. Is adequate as is, and it meets their requirements, and so this meets their requirements for certification, clients. But you still need to do the resulting action. So they wouldn't be coming back with changes to the housing element update itself, this document. But, um, we are working with them to make sure, trying to get them to review the rezoning ordinance and the, excuse me, the zoning ordinance, overlay ordinance. So that, um, we don't, you know, they don't come back with that, with those changes, but if they, yeah, we'll, we'll try our best to make sure that they're satisfied. They've been working really well with us, it's been, uh, H C D state staff, it's been very helpful in everything that we've been doing for both fifth and sixth. We were on a call with them the other day, uh, Karen, the state person, we were talking, uh, a member from Ambig was talking about. How the H C D thinks that there's a great opportunity with the city of Delaware Oaks and appreciates the work that's been done. Um, because there aren't that many sites available for more housing on the Monterey Peninsula, so they look at this. Area and the city as something that's very important to the peninsula.
Thank you, Denise.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so just to clarify, then, this overlay, zoning ordinance will cover us for both fifth and sixth cycle?
The zoning overlay ordinance that we're being adopted is proposed is right now.
Okay. Then we have to do another one?
Yeah, we don't have to do another one at the same time as we adopt the sixth cycle housing element. Um, it can be done subsequently, so I want to, rather than have this cover both, I want to get H C D's. Review comments on the sixth cycle, they're in their ninety day review.
Right, is there ninety, because we only have three days left, right, on the sixth cycle, ninety day review?
Right, the, where we are right now on the ninety day reviews, they're, um, going to be coming back with comments. Within ninety days, which is about the week of Oc- October twenty, twenty-third.
So we'll, we'll, we'll probably know their comments by the time we talk this overlay.
Well, I would hope that, um, we're not gonna wait, that the city will not want to wait for the last minute, because there's, you know, the city has. City council planning commission meetings, and the city council have two meetings.
Right.
And I, I think maybe Alex might wanna explain about first and second reading, but I understand if you, um, your first meeting is just.
Is for the first reading.
Right, and you're, you stand there, you adopt, you can adopt the housing element at that time and then recommend approval, or, or do the first reading of the, of the ordinance. And then the second, um, actually, um, so, I'll just give you the four, Alex.
No, that sounds right.
Okay.
So then we will, so we send that in at the end of October, that's the fifth cycle, so we'll get some comments back, or get some. Will they comment, or will they just like accept it, and then we're continuing on to get a sixth cycle?
What we've been told is that, please don't make a change at all to the housing on the fifth cycle, it just could, it, it just goes to delay us. They told us that they completely accept as written. Um, and please just get the rezoning done, which is, you know, in short order.
So they won't have any comments on this ordinance?
I, I can't say whether they're gonna have comments on the ordinance or not.
But like, they, you could.
Yeah, right, I think we just discussed that in the previous question. The, um, they may have comments on the ordinance.
Yeah.
That certainly is thing we've been working with them closely, and we've been asking them to comment as we go. And, um, so I'm hoping that they do that.
Yeah.
We're also working really hard to try and make this ordinance work within the context of what's required in our state law. So there may be some things that you may wanna add for the perfect ordinance. But we may suggest that you just get this ordinance adopted. And, um, and you can help make changes for your next version if needed, because it's just important to get this completed at that.
Got it, got it, so is there a period of time after sixth cycle compliance that we have to have a new overlay ordinance?
Uh, it could be overly, well, I, I think that's a great question, um, and I have to go back and look at that, but it's my understanding that under sixth cycle, if you adopt your sixth cycle ordinance with. Um, if you adopt your sixth cycle housing element, within the timeframe of that applies sixth cycle law. Which is the December twenty twenty, then you have a, a grace period of time before you are needing to adopt any rezonations for shortfalls. The city will again have a shortfall, meaning they don't have enough land adequately zoned for, um, you know, residential vacant land. Or land available, so because of that shortfall, there will be another rezoning required. There are other options, the city council is gonna make that decision as to where that rezoning would occur. Um, and I think the city, the H C D is obviously one of the wanted sites one and one A. But there have been other sites that have been discussed, um.
But right now, we're just focusing on this.
We're definitely focusing on fifth cycle, yeah.
Okay, and then I just one question, I should have asked you in your, um, in your presentation, the part where you, you cut up and, um. Aided our nineteen ninety-seven general plan, they were proposing uses for that land, the conference center. All that sort of thing, does this, wh- when can we change that? I'm just guessing we don't wanna, of course.
Yeah, that's a great question, um, so the general plan was adopted with those allowable uses. And then you have a zoning code that implements your general plan, so your map, your overall planning document is your general plan. Then you have implementing document of rezoning, how, how are you gonna move that forward? Um, so at any time in, um, within, I think, uh, three or four times within, um, a year, a city. May approve a general plan amendment. Um, I would assume that when a developer comes through, or there's a specific plan, whatever that process is gonna be for the former quarter area. That that would be the time to amend the, the, um, the different specific units. Um, from the site, or the, the allowable uses, I should say.
Right, right. Right.
Thank you.
And, and just, sorry, hold on a minute, um, I, thank you for the presentation, I love it, um, it would be super helpful. We could give this a little bit in advance, so we can read your presentations at a time. It would just be really, I know, I know you're doing a lot, and I appreciate it.
I honestly can't promise that, given that we've had, this is the fourth or fifth or sixth version of documents like this.
Yeah.
And, um, that what we're, as I said before, for the staff reports, we provide that beforehand, for the presentations, that's on the, on the, the day of. And, um, you know, it gives us an opportunity to work all the way through some of these issues. And the staff reports and the zoning ordinance and those elements, of course, that we've before can.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, but we happen, they come out, we are happy. But thank you for that consideration.
Happen, then we might have ordinance, if that gets done, if we get that before the third, even that review, like, because I suspect it will be a burnout.
Yes, I, I think you're right, that's a great idea, it's actually on our schedule to do it early.
Yeah, if you get it on Thursday night, then it's like, usually, you know, it's, try to go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
I understand that, um.
The ordinance, I mean, that's, that would really be helpful.
Yeah, I was, and then I was on our website, and I was searching housing elements. I decided it's a harder time finding the page that has all of the documents, I, I think, I'm sorry.
It's really easy, you go to documents, and I wanna say this publicly, on it, and then you scroll down and there's a housing element page. So just like there, you just have to scroll down, and actually, there's a link. That we put in each of our staff reports that has a link direct to just open up the housing element page.
Right, right, to just, well, yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot of documents on there.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I think, well, I, I, I can, I'll try, but, like, again, it's just working out, and that maybe is.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's, um, a great opportunity to look at that, because it has a wealth of, of background documentation. It has, oh, the previous, you know, environmental, the previous, it's everything, yeah.
Yeah, all right, then, thank you.
Thanks Denise, appreciate your, uh, presentation, um, the only couple of questions, I didn't really have questions, some more comments. I'm glad we're moving this forward, and those I are gonna bring to fruition before the end of the year, which would be nice. Um, on the design standard setbacks, uh, densities and all that. I know H C D probably has certain requirements, um, and I'm assuming parking is another one, that we can't implement anything that would deter. Affordable or low, and also low income housing, is that correct? So we made some. Design or setback rule that seemed prohibitive in size, uh, that would pre, include building this stuff. These homes and stuff, I'm assuming that's the way it's kinda laid out, somewhere to the, uh, A D U ordinance, and you can have certain things, but other, you can't, you cannot change. Is that?
I think generally, that's, that's the correct way, generally, it's hard to say for each of those areas, but it would be better.
And then here is just for verification, forty-three thousand five hundred and two square feet in there.
Well, I'm, we're, we're, yeah, that, that, if you take sixteen thousand, uh, forty-three, you know, I mean, it's, you know.
You can kind of start putting it together, that's a big number, but you can start kind of seeing how they do it, yeah, and it's. If you think of a sixteen thousand square, with this or that, that's a lot of square feet, and the big house, that is, you know, a lot, and all that kind of stuff. So other than that, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the next couple of meetings when we can start around, uh, thank you.
Correct, Denise, thank you, as always, well done, very informative. Um, I'm glad that the city manager brought up the overlay being a combination of residential and commercial. I think that makes a lot of sense for a lot of people, where you can meet your affordable housing. Uh, and also, uh, have the opportunity for some revenue generating activities out there as well, so. Thank you for bringing up that piece, my question was kind of in line with the, with the last question. And Denise, you and I have talked about it in terms of the California laws that keep coming at us, and they change rather quickly. That kind of put restrictions, more and more restrictions on cities, talk about the, the heights and the density and the setbacks and so on. And that we're able to have a little bit of leeway, uh, in those areas. But I'm a little bit concerned that we might get to the point where, as the laws change and, you know, time goes by. That you get into a situation, this buy right situation, where, you know, developers can come in and. The, the laws allow them to implement essentially, uh, things that maybe the city doesn't wanna implement. But because the laws allow them to do it, they can come in and do it. So, y- you know, in terms of those areas, like parking and setbacks and so on, um, I, I know. The, the current housing element, you're, you're working on case into account that, but. I guess, you, what can you foresee as, you know, coming down, uh, impacting those areas and our ability as a city? Uh, to, to kind of get what we want out there, without somebody coming along and saying, hey, it's, it's time. This area has been identified, we want to develop, we have this plan, and, and they can run with it.
Um, um, it's a great question, it's also probably the, a whole meeting in terms of the buy right and what, because there, there is the, um. There's so many requirements, so many laws, when you talk about buy right, um. If the city hasn't done something by a certain amount of time, in this case, adopted housing element that has enough Rena, enough density to meet Rena. Then they can come in and do a buy right development. And that means that applies, they have to have twenty percent of units affordable, at least, so low income. Um, it can't be done, and, um, they need, if you have to have a subdivision to do the development. Then that kind of takes you out of that, because if you have to have a subdivision, um, that's, that's not allowed, well, it's not a part of buy right. Um, any subdivision of a site is subject to the subdivision map act and SEQA, um, and all of their local laws. Um, but typically, if you do a buy right, you cannot apply your initial use permit or line unit development permit. Other discretionary permits, and you don't have to do SEQA review, so it just. Makes you wanna get your housing elements adopted, make sure you, you've got the standards that you want in terms of your design standards, um. And, um, and design review is acceptable, um, it doesn't trigger SEQA, it's based on objective standards. Um, and it doesn't result in the project being rejected or the density reduced, so those are your elements that the state looks at for the. Um, uh, design review. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and you, you're right, we need to vote, it'll be perfect, so, but I, I appreciate that.
But I know rights, I'm the expert on them either, so.
Okay, what I'd like to do is go off to the public, if any of our members of the public would like to ask a question or make a statement, feel free. Um, this is your opportunity.
I have a question. There's a, there's a, something, something might slow the budget, absolutely, like solar panels, if you wanted that, that would be adding. Constant element that would make the budget. Uh, but, to some of the low income, or would that, you can put it on the other building, city development?
I think I heard the question of, um, requirement, of, you know, talking about sustainability and, and other areas that, um, would, you know, the city would wanna have. On all of their developments, including affordable housing, and whether or not, you know, adding solar panels or something, there's potential that, of course, it wouldn't make it affordable. Anymore to a developer or someone who's coming in and doing that, uh, that's correct, but as you, as you're stating. It could be applied across the board on the. That's correct, but as you, as you're stating, it could be applied across the board on the other areas of development. So I think that's the, I, I don't know if there's a question.
You could, you could do that in your element, if you could add that in your permit too.
One of the ideas that's correct, I, I think that's absolutely correct, one of the ideas that we have would be to have a development agreement for affordable housing project that comes in. And that's something that city manager Burton has been talking about, so that if you have a development agreement, it's a, basically, as long as it's not disallowed by state laws under these circumstances, that's something we'll talk to Alex about. So that would be an opportunity to be able to say, you know, we want, we want this, and we'll give you this. But again, we still have to make sure it's objective standards and do nothing that would be density reduction. That I just talked about.
Hey, thanks for that question, and also thanks to you and Juan, we'll be here today, I appreciate it. All right. At this point, I'll give it to the city manager, there are things that we need to do, otherwise, I think this is, it's a bit, right? Yeah, you guys are good. Okay, got anything you need to do?
Yes, thank you. Moving on.
Okay, any other questions or comments from any of the planning commissioners or council members? Okay, and with that, we're adjourned. Thanks for the question.